At the House of Abundance, San Antonio, Texas. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for every one of us ready to study your word tonight. Thank you for loving us and calling us to walk with you. We declare that we are totally dependent on you as we dig into your word. Be a light to our feet and a light to our path. Father, you are worthy of all our prayers. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Today, we are studying Genesis, chapter, chapters forty-seven and forty-eight. Jacob and his family settled in Cushen. Jacob blessed Joseph's sons. I'm going to start by reading chapter forty-seven, verses one to twelve. Then Joseph went and told Pharaoh and said, "My father and my brothers, their flocks and their herds, and all that they possess have come from the land of Canaan, and indeed they are in the land of Cushen. And he took five men from among his brothers and presented them to Pharaoh. Then Pharaoh said to his brothers, "What is your occupation?" And they said to Pharaoh, "Your servants are shepherds, both we and also our fathers." And they said to Pharaoh, "We have come to dwell in the land because your servants have no pasture for their flocks, for the famine is severe in the land of Canaan. Now therefore, please let your servants dwell in the land of Cushen." Then Pharaoh spoke to Joseph, saying, "Your father and your brothers have come to you. The land of Egypt is before you. Have your father and brothers dwell in the best of the land. Let them dwell in the land of Cushen. And if you know any competent men among them, then make them chief herdsman over my livestock." Then Joseph brought in his father, Jacob, and set him before Pharaoh. And Jacob blessed Pharaoh. Pharaoh said to Jacob, "How old are you?" And Jacob said to Pharaoh, "The days of the years of my pilgrimage are one hundred and thirty years. Few and evil have been the days of the years of my life, and they have not attained to the days of the years of the life of my fathers in the days of their pilgrimage." So Joseph blessed Pharaoh and went out from before Pharaoh. And Joseph situated his father and his brothers and gave them a possession in the land of Egypt, in the best part of the land, in the land of Rameses, as Pharaoh had commanded. Then Joseph provided his father, his brothers, and all his father's household with bread according to the number of their families. Chapter forty-six ended with the arrival of Jacob and his family in Egypt. Jacob was happily reunited with his favorite son Joseph, whom he had thought was dead a long time ago. Joseph had directed his family to the land of Cushen because he wanted them to live apart from the Egyptians so that they could preserve their own identity as the people of God. So he coached his brothers to let Pharaoh know that they were shepherds, for he knew that the Egyptians would not accept shepherds living among them, for every shepherd is an abomination to the Egyptian. Chapter forty-seven opens with servant, with Joseph going to inform Pharaoh about the arrival of his father and his brothers with their flocks and herds and all their possessions from the land of Canaan. He presented five of his brothers to Pharaoh. "What is your occupation?" Pharaoh asked them. "Your servants are shepherds, both we and our fathers," they replied, and pleaded that Pharaoh would allow them to remain in the land of Cushen so that they, they will have enough pasture for their flocks and herds. Cushen is an area in the Nile Delta and is well watered and most suitable for grazing. Pharaoh told Joseph that his father and sons would dwell in the best part of the land, specifically in the land of Cushen. He added that the best of them could be made chief herdsman, herdsman over his own livestock. Joseph's brothers told Pharaoh who they were so that they could be set apart. In the same way, we Christians should let the world know who we are so that we can be set apart. We are God's people and are expected to be set apart. After all, Jesus said, we are in the world, but not of the world. John seventeen, six. Then Joseph presented his father Jacob to Pharaoh, and Jacob blessed Pharaoh. Surprising, isn't it? In spite of the fact that Pharaoh was a king and Jacob's host, Jacob blessed him in the name of the living God. Possibly, Joseph, Jacob was fulfilling God's promise to Abraham in Genesis, chapter twelve, verse three, that in him and his descendants, all the families of the earth will be blessed. Moreover, the culture valued age. The writer of Hebrews talked about how Abraham, who possessed the promises of God, gave a tithe to Machizeadek, the king of Salem and priest of righteousness on his return from the battle to rescue Lot. Genesis fourteen, twenty, because he was superior to Abraham. Hebrews seven, seven says, "Now beyond all contradiction, the lesser is blessed by the greater." Then Pharaoh said to Jacob, "How old are you?" Jacob, in his answer, spoke of his years as few compared with those of his father Isaac and grandfather Abraham. Abraham lived for one hundred and seventy-five years, while Isaac lived for one hundred and eighty years. Jacob said, "The days of the years of my pilgrimage are one thirty years, and evil have been the days of the years of my life." Jacob referred to his life and his ancestors' lives on earth as a pilgrimage. He and his forefathers are listed in Hebrews as heroes of faith who were strangers and pilgrims on the earth. They knew that this world was, was temporary and that their eternal home will be with God. Hebrews fifteen, Hebrews eleven, fifteen, Hebrews eleven, fifteen reads, "But now they deserve a better, that is, a heavenly country. Therefore, God is not ashamed to be called their God, for he has prepared a city for them." In the same way, all of us Christians are pilgrims and strangers on earth, living in faith with, with the hope that we will dwell with God in eternity. So, as the songwriter said, "This world is not our home. We are just passing through." Jacob also told Pharaoh that he had lived through hard times. "Evil have been the days of the years of my life," he said. This is very true. His early years were characterized with rivalry with his brother Isol. His years with his uncle Liban were full of deception and hardship. For many years, he lived in sorrow and grief over his favorite son Joseph, whom he believed was dead. He was troubled and distressed by Simeon and Levi's murderous vengeance against the Shechemites, and he lost his favorite wife Rachel in childbirth. Indeed, he had gone through a lot. Joseph settled his father and brothers in the best part of the land, the land of Cushen, also known as the district of Rameses, as Pharaoh had commanded, and provided for all of them. They will be there for four hundred years until a Pharaoh arose who did not know Joseph. Now let's read verses thirteen to twenty-six. Excuse me. "Now there was no bread in all the land, for the famine was very severe, so that the land of Egypt and the land of Canaan languished because of the famine. And Joseph gathered all the money that was found in the land of Egypt and in the land of Canaan for the grain which they bought. And Joseph brought the money into Pharaoh's house. So when the money failed in the land of Egypt and in the land of Canaan, all the Egyptians came to Joseph and said, "Give us bread, for why should we die in your presence? For the money has failed." And Joseph said, "Give your livestock, and I will give you bread for your livestock if the money is gone." So they brought their livestock to Joseph, and Joseph gave them bread in exchange for the horses, the flocks, the cattle, of the herds, and for the donkeys. Thus he fed them with bread in exchange for all their livestock that year. When the year had ended, they came to him the next year and said to him, "We will not hide from my lord that our money is gone. My lord also has our herds of livestock. There is nothing left in the sight of my lord but our bodies and our lands. Why should we die before you rise, both we and our land? Buy us and our land for bread, and we will be servants of Pharaoh. Give us seed that we may live and not die, that the land may not be desolate." Then Joseph bought all the land of Egypt for Pharaoh. For every man of the Egyptians sold his land because the famine was severe upon them. So the land became Pharaoh's. And as for the people, he moved them into the cities from one end of the borders of Egypt to the other end. Only the land of the priests he did not buy, for the priests had rations allotted to them by Pharaoh, and they ate their rations which Pharaoh gave them. Therefore, they did not sell their lands. Then Joseph said to the people, "Indeed, I have bought you and your land this day for Pharaoh. Look, here is seed for you, and you shall sow the land, and shall come to pass in the harvest, that you shall give one fifth to Pharaoh. Four-fifths shall be your own, as seed for this field and for your food for those of your households, and as food for your little ones." So they said, "You have saved our lives. Let us find favor in the sight of my lord, and we will be Pharaoh's servants." And Joseph made it a law over the land of Egypt to this day that Pharaoh should have one fifth, except for the land of the priests only, which did not become Pharaoh's. The famine became very severe, especially in the lands of Egypt and Canaan. The Egyptians gave up all the money in exchange for food. When the people had no money, no more money, and they went to Joseph, Joseph told them to give their livestock in exchange for bread, and they did. Thus, the wealth and livestock of Pharaoh increased. When money and livestock failed, they told Joseph, "Buy, buy us and our land, and we will be the servants of Pharaoh. Give us seed that we may live and not die, that the land may not be desolate." So Joseph bought all the land of Egypt for Pharaoh. Only the land of the priests were not sold, because Pharaoh had allotted rations to them. So all the people's lands became Pharaoh's, and Joseph gave them seeds to plant. At harvest time, twenty percent of the produce will be given to Pharaoh, while eighty percent belonged to them. The people were very grateful to Joseph. "You have saved our lives," they said. "We will be Pharaoh's servants." You will remember that when Joseph revealed himself to his brothers in Genesis, chapter forty-five, verse five, Genesis forty-five, verse five, he said to them, "Do not therefore be grieved or angry with yourselves, because you sold me here, for God sent me before you to preserve lives." Joseph here was only accomplishing God's plan for his life, and so the people were saved from famine. God has blessed you wherever you are for a purpose. Whether you are in your Canaan or in your Egypt, God is there with you. He is faithful, and you can trust him to accomplish his plans for your life. Let's read the rest of that chapter, beginning from verse twenty-seven. "So Israel dwelt in the land of Egypt, in the country of Cushen, and they had possessions there, and grew and multiplied exceedingly. And Jacob lived in the land of Egypt seventeen years." So the length of Jacob's life was one hundred and forty-seven years. "When the time drew near that Israel must die, he calls his Joseph, his son Joseph, and said to him, 'Now, if I find favor in your sight, please put your hand under my thigh and deal kindly and truly with me. Please do not bury me in Egypt, but let me lie with my fathers. You shall carry me out of Egypt and bury me in their burial place.'" And he said, "I will do as you have said." Then he said, "Swear to me." And he swore to him. So Israel bowed himself on the head of the bed. Israel prospered and multiplied in the land of Egypt. This is not surprising. God's care for his people only reinforced his earlier promise to Abraham that his descendants would become a great nation. He was keeping his promise. Our God is faithful. Jacob was one hundred and thirty years old when he came to settle in Egypt. God gave him seventeen more years to live and watch his family expand. He was now one hundred and forty-seven and was about to die. He called his son Joseph and made him promise solemnly that he would not bury him in Egypt, but that he would take him to Canaan and bury him there where his father and grandfather had been buried. When Jacob was about to leave Egypt for Canaan, God had promised him that he would bring him back again after Joseph would have closed his eyes in death. So he was merely asking Joseph to do what God had promised him. He demonstrated his faith in God's promise by asking to be buried in the land promised to his inten, in, in descendants. He believed that someday his descendants would occupy the promised land, and even now, even though now they were still in Egypt. Jacob made Joseph swear that he would do what his father had requested, and he did. Let's go to chapter forty-eight. Jacob blesses Joseph's sons. I'm going to start by reading the first seven verses. Chapter forty-eight. "Now it came to pass after these things that Joseph was told, 'Indeed, your father is sick.' And he took with him his two sons, Manasseh and Ephraim. And Jacob was told, 'Look, your son Joseph is coming to you.' And Israel strengthened himself and sat up on the bed. Then Jacob said to Joseph, "God Almighty appeared to me at loss in the land of Canaan and blessed me, and said to me, 'Behold, I will make you fruitful and multiply you, and I will make of you a multitude of people and give this land to your descendants after you for an everlasting possession. And now your two sons, Ephraim and Manasseh, who were born to you in the land of Egypt before I came to you in Egypt, are mine. As Reuben and Simeon, they shall be mine. Your offspring, whom you beget after them, shall be yours. They will be called by the names of their brothers in their inheritance. But as for me, when I came from Padang, Rachel died beside me in the land of Canaan on the way, where, when there was but a little distance to go to Ephra, Ephra, and I buried her on the way to Ephra, that is Bethlehem.'" Joseph got the news that his, his father was sick, and he went to see him with his two sons, Manasseh and Ephraim. Jacob strengthened himself and sat up on the bed. He recounted to Joseph and his sons God's blessing upon his life. He spoke about how God had appeared to him at Bethel and the land of Canaan, and had promised to make him fruitful and multiply him and make him a great nation and give to his descendants the land of Canaan forever. He was speaking of how God had passed on to him the covenant that he first made with Abraham. He was declaring God's faithfulness to his, to the generation that will follow him. What a great example for us. We too should learn to declare to our children and grandchildren God's blessings upon our lives. We should declare his goodness and faithfulness to the generations following us. Jacob told Joseph that he was adopting his two sons, Manasseh and Ephraim, and his own two sons, as his own sons. They were given the same rights and status as Jacob's other sons. This meant that even though Joseph was not the firstborn, he would be given a double portion of the inheritance. Reuben, who was the firstborn, had forfeited his position by having sexual intercourse with Bilher, his father's concubine. Genesis thirty-five, twenty-two. Genesis thirty-five, twenty-two. Also, Simeon, who was the second son, had fallen out of favor because of the outrageous act of murdering the Shechemites, which he and his brother Levi committed. Genesis thirty-four, twenty-five to twenty-six. Genesis thirty-four, twenty-five to twenty-six. Joseph would not be in the list of the tribes of Israel. His sons' names, Ephraim and Manasseh, will be there instead. Then, briefly in passing, Jacob remembered the death and burial of his favorite son, favorite wife Rachel, Joseph's mother. Rachel had died while giving birth to Benjamin. Now let's read verses eight to twenty-two. Eight to twenty-two, that's the rest of the chapter. "Then Israel saw Joseph's sons and said, 'Who are these?' Joseph said to his father, 'They are my sons, whom God has given me in this place.' And he said, 'Bring them near to me, that I will bless them.' Now the eyes of Israel were dim with age, so that he could not see. Then Joseph brought them near him, and he kissed them and embraced them. And Israel said to Joseph, 'I had not thought to see your face, but in fact, God also has shown me your offspring.' So Joseph brought them from beside his knees, and he bowed down with his face to the earth. And Joseph took them both, Ephraim with his right hand towards Israel's right, left hand, and Manasseh with his left hand towards Israel's right hand, and brought them near him. Then Israel stretched out his hands and laid it on his right hand and laid it on Ephraim's head, who was the younger, and his left hand on Manasseh's head, guiding his hands knowingly, for Manasseh was the firstborn. And he blessed Joseph and said, "God, before whom my fathers Abraham and Isaac walked, the God who has fed me all my life long to this day, the angel who had redeemed me from all evil, bless the lads. Let my name be named upon them and the name of my fathers Abraham and Isaac, and let them grow into a multitude in the midst of the earth." Now when Joseph saw that his fathers, that his father laid his right hand on the head of Ephraim, it displaced him. So he took hold of his father's hand to remove it from Ephraim's head to Manasseh's head. And Joseph said to his father, "Not so, my father, for this one is the firstborn. Put your right hand on his head." But his father refused and said, "I know, my son, I know. He also shall become a people, and he also shall be great. But truly, his younger brother shall be greater than he, and his descendants shall become a multitude of nations." So he blessed them that day, saying, "By you, Israel we bless," saying, So he blessed them that day, saying, by you Israel will bless, saying, may God make you as Ephraim and Manasseh. And thus he set Ephraim before Manasseh. Then Israel said to Joseph, behold, I am dying. But God will be with you and bring you back to the land of your fathers. Moreover, I have given you, to you, one portion above your brothers, which I took from the land of the Amorite with my sword and my bow. Who are these? Jacob asked when he saw Joseph's sons. They are my sons, whom God has given me in this place, Joseph replied. Jacob's eyes were dim with age, just as father's, his father Israel's eyes, Isaac's eyes were when Jacob deceived him to receive Esau's blessing. Isaac mistakenly blessed Jacob. But there was no such mistake here. Jacob was in control of what he was doing. He told Joseph to bring them near. He had not thought he would ever see Joseph again. But thanks to God, he did not only see Joseph, but there he was to bless Joseph's children. Jacob was full of gratitude to God. Are we always grateful to God? God is good. He does for us what we would never have thought was possible. Joseph humbly presented his children to his father, Ephraim towards his left hand, being the younger, and Manasseh towards his right hand, being the older. But Jacob crushed his hands and put his right hand on Ephraim's head, and his left hand on Manasseh. Jacob blessed Joseph and the boys. He prayed that the God of his fathers, of Abraham and Isaac, would bless them. Let my name be named upon them, and the name of my father, fathers, Abraham and Isaac, and let them grow into a multitude in the midst of the earth. Joseph tried to guide his father's hands, such that his right hand would be on Manasseh, who was the older. But Jacob told him that he knew what he was doing. Once again, in the book of Genesis, God sovereignly overturned the order of things. Jacob said Ephraim will be greater than Manasseh. But Manasseh would also be great and become a people. Jacob himself was elevated over his older brother Esau. In verse twenty, Jacob prayed, by you Israel will bless, saying, may God make you as Ephraim and as Manasseh, thus putting Ephraim before Manasseh. Finally, Jacob blessed Joseph. God will be with you and bring you back to the land of your fathers. Moreover, he gave to Joseph a portion of land he fought to acquire from the hand of the Amorites. This will be fulfilled when the Israelites return to Canaan to possess the promised land. Hebrews eleven twenty one, Hebrews eleven twenty one says the following about, has this to say about Jacob blessing Joseph's children. By faith, Jacob, when he was dying, blessed each of the sons of Joseph and worshiped, leaning on top of his staff. Let us pray. Excuse me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for our study of tonight and the lessons you have taught us. Thank you for helping us to see how your blessings can overturn hardship for your glory. You graciously filled Jacob's old age with unexpected joy. You are faithful, even when we are not, and can be trusted to accomplish your purposes in spite of us. Help us to understand that in everything you allow to happen in our lives, you always seek to do us good and not evil. Glory be to your name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Join us next time as we come to the end of the book of Genesis by studying chapters forty nine and fifty. Good night.